Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority for Tuesday, May 6, 2025. And now, Madam Clerk, you have some, something to say about Councilmember Marr's appearance?
During roll call, we will do that.
Okay.
She'll make a statement.
Okay.
We can go to the national anthem.
All right, let's do, yeah, no, I got it.
Okay.
Okay, good. So now, please join me in standing as a video plays and we can sing the National Anthem together, then we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance together as well.
[singing] Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? When so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, o'er the treetops bright stars through the perilous sight; o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming; and the rocket's red glare, the hot-creased minare, it proved to the night that our flag was still there. O say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Now's the time for our moment of solemn expression, and we're once again joined by Pastor Emeritus from Calvary Chapel, Pastor Dave Mann. So Pastor Emeritus, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, John. It's good seeing you all again. Father, we come before you again and ask for your blessing upon our city, Costa Mesa. The meeting before us this evening, the business issues and the decisions that will be made, we pray for blessing upon the mayor, each of the council members and their families, all of our city officials and department staff. We lift up the police department, the chief of police, the captains, the entire police force and department staff there. We list up the fire department, too, our chief and the captains, the entire fire response staff and fire and rescue, the Mesa Water District, our Costa Mesa City Operations Yard. We think of all the businesses and the residents that reside here in Costa Mesa. We pray for your blessing and protection that would continue over them each and every day as we live. Lord Jesus, we thank you for your continued presence, guidance, and protection towards us and our city, but we pray also for our neighboring cities and our country, the United States, that you would extend the same spirit of blessing upon all this evening and all the days that to follow. We ask this in Christ's name, amen. Amen. All right.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Pettis? Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Beulah?
Here.
Councilmember Camaros?
Here.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes, I'm here. I'm attending the meeting remotely. I am in Richmond, Virginia, at the Hyatt House, and there is no one in attendance with me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Stevens?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one presentation tonight. It's for 2025 National Bike Month. So we are recognizing May as National Bike Month. This is a time when communities across the country celebrate the health and environmental benefits of cycling. Bike riding contributes to a more sustainable, active, and connected city, whether commuting to work, riding with your family, or enjoying a peaceful trip to the beach along the Santa Ana River. Here in Costa Mesa, we are proud to support cycling through infrastructure improvements, safety education, and community programs like community bike skills workshops and our Safe Routes to School efforts. As part of our celebration, I want to recognize a Costa Mesa bike ride group, Liller Dog. The group has a Wednesday night tradition that brings cyclists across Southern California to Lions Park. The name Liller Dog means Little Saturday in Swedish and reflects a midweek break to come together, build community, and explore our city by bike. Joining us tonight is a member of Liller Dog Bike Ride, Joel Medina. And so I'm going to call him to the podium. You can, you can go right there if it's more convenient. And while you're taking the stage, if you will, to give your remarks, I'm going to read some excerpts. It's kind of long, but I'm going to read the excerpts from the proclamation that we're going to present, and then we'll give you the floor to say a few words. May is National Bike Month, established in 1956 and promoted by the League of American Bicyclists, and is celebrated in communities across the country as a way to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and to encourage more people to try biking. And the bicycle is an economic and environmentally sustainable mode of transportation, an excellent form of recreation, and an effective means to conserve energy, reduce air pollution and street congestion, and improve the overall livability of communities. Creating bicycle-friendly communities supports local economic development, attracts tourism, and appeals to businesses and residents seeking vibrant, healthy lifestyles and a full range of transportation choices. The city of Costa Mesa is committed to supporting cycling through continued investment in bicycle infrastructure programs and safety education that benefits all road users. Costa Mesa actively promotes safe routes to school through programs and planning efforts aimed at improving student safety and accessibility, including an annual bike and walk-to-school day events that encourage students to walk or bike to school. The city is developing a Safe Routes to School Action Plan to implement safety and access around 23 school campuses, demonstrating a strong commitment to youth mobility and health. Costa Mesa encourages biking to school through educational initiatives, providing students with safe cycling and resources such as bike maps, safety guides, and access to programs. Throughout May, Costa Mesa residents and visitors will celebrate the joy, freedom, and benefits of bicycling through group rides, community events, educational workshops, and family-friendly activities. Local organizations, including bicycle clubs, schools, businesses, public health agencies, and civic groups, along with national partners like the League of American Bicyclists, are joining together to promote safe and widespread bicycling during National Bike Month and throughout the year. These collective efforts promote greater public awareness of bicycle safety, reduce collisions and injuries, and encourage more people to choose bicycling as a healthy, affordable, and sustainable form of transportation and recreation. Now therefore, I, John B. Stevens, Mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Bike Month in the city of Costa Mesa and encourage all residents and visitors to participate in Bike Month activities and share the roads safely and respective respectfully with all users. And with that, Mr. Medina, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. My name's Joel Medina. I am just one part of Liller Dog Bike Ride. I have a lot of our riders here with us today, my personal friends as well. So it's our honor to accept this proclamation, be here with you. I just have a few words. In September 2022, Costa Mesa resident and our friend Roy Golightly founded the Wednesday Night Liller Dog Bike Ride. Liller Dog is a Swedish word that roughly translates to Little Saturday and refers to a Scandinavian tradition where those who work a week without a typical weekend would get together with friends on Wednesday nights to celebrate and socialize. For the last three years now, cyclists from all over Southern California have gathered at Lions Park at 6:15 p.m. to meet their neighbors, admire each other's bikes, and get to know the safe cycling routes around the city of Costa Mesa. However, we are much more than a bike ride. We're a community that supports each other, advocates for safer cycling infrastructure in our neighborhoods, teaches each other about bike mechanics, and goes on adventures to discover California on two wheels. From Talbot Park to Back Bay, from South Coast to Triangle Square, we invite everyone who is interested to join us and become part of our welcoming community. And just as a personal note, this is so awesome that you invited us to be here, and it makes me, I know a lot of us, really proud to be Costa Mesa residents. So thank you so much.
Thank, thank you for being here. So, so now, now we'll come down. I'll present the, oh, did you, yeah, did you want to have the floor, Councilmember? Councilmember Reynolds? Uh, hold on one second. Sorry. Go ahead. You should be able to get on.
Okay, I see. Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a few additional comments. I love, of course, the work that we're doing in the city to support biking, and I got to know the folks, I think I made it on the first, second, or third ride, and there was maybe four or five people on that first ride, and it's just been so cool to see the group grow. We talk a lot about, in these chambers, we talk a lot about the, the safety of the bike infrastructure and sort of other, maybe more quantifiable aspects of, of biking. What I really love about the Liller Dog group is the community building that you do. It's one of these less tangible but, but very, very real benefits of biking, and it's just such a cool story that started with one person's vision who said, hey, I'm going to start biking and inviting people to bike with me. Thank you to those who kept the ride going even when that first person moved away. I, I heard that at the most recent ride, it started with four or five people a year ago, the most recent ride had 40 people, which is amazing, and I think a testament to how biking brings people together. One of the last rides I made it on, and I know it's been a while, we had three generations in my family participate, my father, myself, and my nephew. My nephew, I think he was 11 at the time, you know, complained about having to walk around the block, but he stuck it out for 13 miles on a bike ride with Liller Dog because he was so inspired by biking with you all. So thank you for keeping the ride going. Thank you for keeping it party pace, welcoming lots of people, and I'll encourage everyone on the dais here, everyone in the room, to try out a ride Wednesday nights with Liller Dog.
All right, thank you. So, so now, now we're going to take a photo with the council, the proclamation, all your bikes, so we'll, we'll meet you right there in the center. Okay, now I'm going to give the floor to the city attorney for the closed session report. Ms. Hall Barlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was reportable action taken in closed session this evening by motion of Councilmember Camaros, seconded by Councilmember Beulah. The city council acted to terminate the employment agreement of the city manager. Councilmember Reynolds and Marr voted no. Mayor Stevens abstained. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sorry, next up is our public comments, and with respect to public comments, you get, you get three minutes to speak. You could speak on anything other than the items on the agenda. I, I do want to say for people, because sometimes these comments take a little long, that the, the public hearing item, number one, if anybody's waiting for that, that's going to be called and then continued. So I don't want people to wait around for public hearing item number one. But you could speak about anything other than what's on the agenda. You get three minutes. At, at two minutes, you'll hear a tone. Please wrap it up, and then your mic will be cut off at three minutes. Then we'll go to the people in the chambers first, then we'll go to, on Zoom. And so who wants to, anybody want to speak? Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening, members of the city council and city staff. I'm here tonight representing the advocates to reimagine the Brentwood Park Playground. Brentwood Park was dedicated to the community in 1978, which is 47 years ago, by the beloved Mayor Norma Herzog. Mayor Herzog was the first female mayor representing the city of Costa Mesa. She had an amazing legacy, bringing many programs to our city for citizens of all ages and life stages. In addition to her focus on preserving green space and parks within our city, she was heavily invested in bringing the arts to our community. I never personally had a chance to meet her before her passing in 2023, but it would have been an honor, as I shared many of the same values and goals for making Costa Mesa a special and unique city. Brentwood Park is a beautiful community park and a gem of the neighborhood. What are like most about the park are all of the eucalyptus trees, many of which are believed to be over 50 years old. I would have shared a picture on screen, but some things are meant to be seen firsthand, and the trees of Brentwood Park are one of those things. If members of the city have not had the chance to visit the park, I encourage them to do so, as it's a short walk, bike, or car ride away. On screen, you will see the familiar names of Mayor Herzog, Mayor Hammett, and Councilwoman Mary Smallwood, an all-star list of incredible people who spent their lives making Costa Mesa great and officially dedicated Brentwood Park in 1978. I've personally lived in this community for the past nine years. Myself, along with a group of advocates for Brentwood Park, have spent the past five years pushing to see to it that Brentwood Park Playground equipment gets updated as it is over 25 years old. Funds have been fully allocated for the playground update with the help from the community, support from Mayor Stevens, Councilmember Pettis, and the city staff, as well as extraordinary efforts from both Jeffrey Harlan and Liz Dorn Parker. My gracious ask tonight of the city is what steps can we take now that will lead to shovels in the ground and then the completion of a newly installed playground for our community? Could we maybe even consider some extra resources to accelerate the project? The advocates of Brentwood Park Playground have one ultimate goal, seeing the playground be updated and rededicated in 2025 with the mayor and members of the council, PACS, Public Works, and the entire team at City Hall who work hard behind the scenes to make our city great. Let's make it happen. The community will rally this and support the city's efforts as needed. These kids and many others have been coming to these meetings and learning about how government works and how people come together to make things better. I hope we make them proud. The advocates for Brentwood Park Playground, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Raina, Raina, you have the floor.
Good evening, city council, city staff, and incredible community members. My name is Raina, and I'm here to share with all of you a really exciting event that's coming up next Saturday, May 17. If you haven't heard about it, it's our annual Love Costa Mesa Day, and this year is actually our eighth year doing this. It's a citywide volunteer day where we invite the entire community, including all of you young ones here, to participate in a service project that is suitable to whether it's your age, your stage of life, mobility. We have a space for everyone to participate. This year, we will have around 70 service projects that's happening throughout the city of Costa Mesa. We're, I believe, we're planting trees, we're packing birthday bags for foster kids, we're painting elderly homes, we're redoing landscape for some of our senior folks. There's a lot that we're doing on that day, so we invite you to come out, and we're actually going to kick off the day. So this year, we're moving up the morning rally by 30 minutes earlier, just for those of you who have been. It's going to start at 7:30 a.m. Here in front of City Hall, we're going to be giving out free T-shirts. There's going to be multiple local coffee vendors giving out free coffee. North Gate is sponsoring pastries for everyone, and then you go out, you serve on your project, then you come back to City Hall. We have six local Costa Mesa restaurants sponsoring 1,200 lunches for every volunteer that shows up, and we have performances lined up all the way. We'll have Olaf performing. I heard we have a Billy Joel impression is coming. We have hula dancers. So there's going to be an incredible celebration of Costa Mesa after you serve on your project. So hopefully, we'll see you next Saturday for Love Costa Mesa, and you can visit our website, lovecostamesa.org to sign up. And if you can't make it on that day, we do things year-round throughout the community that you can find out more information. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Would you like to go? Okay, you may go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Serge Jatellis, and I'm with the Coastal Corridor Alliance. We used to be called the Banning Rant Conservancy, and so here, here I am today to, to share a little bit about it. So we are a nonprofit, a local nonprofit that focuses on ecological wildlife preservation and conservation. So recently, we protected nearly 400 acres, so it's 380 acres along the Santa Ana River, so parts of Costa Mesa, Newport, and Hampton Beach. So, and eventually, that's going to be open to, to the public. So our partners, the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, hold the title to this land, and we are working together with a team of consultants to create a plan for public access and also to prepare for sea-level rise. So we are in the planning process. What does that mean, that we need your feedback on, your input on what you would want to see there, how you would want to utilize this, this piece of land while preserving the native flora and fauna? So some of the feedback we've received so far includes like hiking trails, biking trails, picnic areas, benches to go enjoy the sunsets, just to mention some of them. And so there's a lot of different ways you can give us feedback. One, by emailing us, or two, also by going to our, our website, randopreserve.org, or by coming to one of our events. We're going to have a total of four events. The first one is going to be via Zoom on Thursday, May 15, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. The second one would be in-person at Fieldwork in Costa Mesa, Wednesday, May 21, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The third one would be Monday, June 2, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Norma Community Center. And the fourth and final one would be from 4:00 to 6:00 at Newport Beach Civic Center on Saturday, June 21. Feel free to come talk to me if you have any questions. Please, we need you, we need your feedback. We don't want to design this preserve for the community. We want the community to help us design it for, for you, because at the end of the day, the community, it's the one that are going to enjoy it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, city council members, and city staff. My name is Peter Crater. I am the artistic director for the Costa Mesa Playhouse. I'm also joined by several members of our board. As one of the longest operating theaters in Orange County, the Costa Mesa Civic Playhouse has been a cultural institution in Costa Mesa since 1965. We were a part of the city's leisure services department originally located at the OC Fairgrounds. With financial assistance from the city, we transitioned to Ray Elementary School and became a nonprofit organization in 1984 within the Newport-Mesa Unified School District. However, our 40-year partnership with the school district is now being terminated, and the existence of the playhouse is very much at risk. For close to 60 years, the Costa Mesa Civic Playhouse has distinguished itself from other theaters in the region by presenting award-winning and socially impactful works not typically found at other community theaters. With no paid staff and only small production stipends for local theater talent, our board members work tirelessly, volunteering their time and skills to provide premium theater to the local community. Since its inception, the playhouse has put up over 230 mainstage theatrical productions, not including numerous special events and children's programming. Unfortunately, the school district has informed us that our lease agreement at Ray Elementary School will terminate one year early on June 29, 2025, allowing us only three months to vacate our home for the past 40 years and cease conducting our services indefinitely. We are very thankful of the 40-plus years of partnership between the playhouse and the school district. With our low-cost lease agreement, we would never have been able to survive the financial strains and demands of operating a community theater in Orange County. It is for this very reason that we are proud to be the only and last community theater in Costa Mesa. Removing the city's staple would be a loss, not just for us, but to the history and broader cultural life in our city, especially given its proud identity as the city of the arts. The timing of the lease termination is especially challenging, considering the plans we have underway to conclude our current season. As it stands, we will not be able to produce our 59th season, even though production rights have already been secured. We are also being stifled from growing our audience and fundraise around our landmark 60th season. In fact, Mayor Stevens is set to provide the playhouse with a significant recognition upon the commencement of our 60th season this coming September. To put it bluntly, losing our current space is a death sentence to the playhouse. With real estate at a premium, our limited funds are simply not enough to secure and move into a new space in less than three months. We are reaching out to all of you in order to see if you would help us with the following. See if the school district will be willing to enter a joint use agreement with the playhouse at the upcoming Estancia High School Theater Complex. Does the city's master plan allow for any space for this type of shared use agreement? And also to meet with the playhouse's board directors in order to see if there is any other routes the city could provide and help us. We have strong support from local community, audiences, business, donors, and artists alike. I would appreciate the support.
Sorry, your, your time, your time is up, but please, I know, I got an email. Please call me. I've got some solutions for you. Some suggestions.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Yes, yes.
I, I've just got a, a very small request. The Norma Herzog Community Center is a, just an amazing venue. I'd like to see more people use it. I'm a member of the Newport Orca Society. We meet there once a month. One of the issues that we have there is that the projectors need some maintenance or need to be replaced. They have a lot of streaks, and I don't think it would be a lot of money, but I think it would be a great improvement, and it's such an amazing venue. We should really have the equipment there in good shape to be able to facilitate groups' meeting there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else in the, in the chambers, let's go to Zoom for our public comments on Zoom.
Okay, first speaker is phone number ending in 613.
613, you have the floor.
Good evening. First, I'd like to apologize for my language from the last minute. I apologize for that. Now, moving on, I'm completely baffled by the bike improvements on Harbor Boulevard. It's not Harbor, Adams, between Harbor and Fairview. I don't ever see anybody riding their bikes on Adams between Harbor and Fairview, and then we spent, I don't know how much money on a bike lane that no one's going to use, just like 19th Street. I did have a video queued up. I did have a video queued up that I sent in, and I would like to spend my time speaking about something else I think is really important right now. And if you are curious about the video, about Manny Chavez and how he led to the issue that we're having in pot shops, go to Costa Mesa Lampoon YouTube channel and watch how he argued for an unlimited number of pot shops, and you can see why we're in this mess where our city can be litigated for a sense of amount. But I hear a lot of applause, and I'm assuming it's near the end of the semester, and there's probably a lot of students there. And I want to speak to climate change. And the thing that I want to talk about climate change is it's about control. It's very easy to prove beyond a doubt that climate change is not caused by humans creating CO2 in the atmosphere. All one has to do is look into the big red storm on Jupiter and see that that storm is changing. There is no way that our use of fossil fuel on Earth is impacting that storm on a planet millions and millions of miles away. So this idea that CO2 or carbon dioxide is bad, is bad. That's not the problem. The problem is that people who use that do control. So the students and audience, you really need to push back to narratives that officials have about things like this. One of the things that you have to understand is the CO2 levels. If CO2, if the atmosphere was $100, how much of that dollar amount would be considered CO2? You know, $5, $10, $30? No, 4 cents. 4 cents of $100 is CO2. If CO2 gets to a penny, between a penny and two pennies, plant life dies. If the plant life dies, everything dies. CO2 levels have been magnitudes greater than it is now. It's about control.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, that was it. Sorry, Mr. McPhor. Okay, we'll close public comment. Now, we're going to move on to Councilmember Committee reports, comments, and suggestions. First up from District 5 is Councilmember Arliss Reynolds.
I have a long list of items today I was going to report out on and share on and make some requests on. I'm going to save that. I will say a quick thanks to Sergio and Evis, Lydian, and Sandy for all of your help in the last few weeks on a variety of different events, and to all of the staff who were involved in the emergency preparedness town hall. I thought that was excellent. I'm going to pause and speak on the action that was reported out tonight from closed Still processing it a little bit. For those who may not have caught it, our city attorney reported out that on a, I guess, 4 to 1 vote with one abstention, councilmembers here voted to terminate our city manager's We've sat through some council meetings where I've gone home with a lot of questions by the decisions of members on this council, but certainly tonight, this is the most questionable decision that I've observed, and it gives me a lot of concern. I do want to say, of our city manager, I hope she's not listening tonight, she is one of the most incredible leaders that I have met, one of the most incredible people that I have met, and the city of Costa Mesa has been so lucky to have her. Her combination of intelligence, financial whiz, her experience working in lots of different cities, the experience that she had through her life growing up, her heart for public service and her heart for Costa Mesa has benefited the community of Costa Mesa so much through some very, very, very difficult times, and I am so grateful for her service and her commitment through those very difficult I know that staff respect and adore her. The team that she has assembled here, the team that was here that she has supported and the team that she's attracted and recruited to the city because of her leadership is an incredible team, and I think a testament to her leadership. And as I have some more time to react to the decision made about an hour ago, I will share many more of those accomplishments, but it is a long list of accomplishments. What stands out for me and what I want to share is some of the most meaningful interactions that I've had, thanks to our city manager, and that is with community members who, for decades of living in Costa Mesa, have felt unwelcome in the city. The teams that she has built, the culture that she has supported and fostered, staff that she has recruited to the city, and her personal interactions have made those people feel welcome in Costa Mesa, residents of Costa Mesa feel welcome in Costa Mesa. And those are some of the most meaningful interactions. Just last week, just this week, yeah, just yesterday, talked to a resident who was on the verge of tears, being so thankful about how her experience in Costa Mesa now is different than it was 10 years ago when she was trying to get help in the city, and that I attribute to our city manager. I'll have a lot more to say about this. I hope that the city will honor her accomplishments and her contributions. While I'm certainly at a crisis of confidence in the city council, I have full confidence in the staff here, full faith in the staff that we have, and I thank you all for your service. My ask of the acting city manager and city attorney is that we do agendize, as requested at a previous meeting, a code of conduct and code of ethics for a future meeting. Thank you.
Next up from District 6 is Councilmember Jeff Pettis.
Thank you, Mayor. Some few things happening in District 6. First of all, last weekend, I had the opportunity to be a part of the ribbon cutting for Share Ourselves, which is a great example of a private-public partnership, and mental health and mental health services are near and dear to my heart. Had a chance to tour the facility, and I was, gosh, I was impressed by the facility, by the staff, by the equipment. I mean, it rivals what we have going on at the VA in terms of stuff. So it's great to see, again, public and private coming together. It's excellent. And also had a good meeting today with Kirk Baumaster and Brett Echols regarding the Kaiser School and the hope for permanent lighting coming up. They've been using temporary lighting for a long time for the various different sporting events that kids share the field, so that'll be something coming up in the near future that we hope to get done. And listening to the young lady on Brentwood Park and also the Costa Mesa Playhouse, you know, PAX, which is for all the parks and the commission work in arts, is something that is near and dear to me. Before knowing anything about council and running a city, just being a representative for the people on the ground and the community is what I feel I'm here to do and here to advocate for. And one of the important ways we advocate for residents, I can't do it all myself, so we have obviously our staff, which is a given, how helpful and supportive they are, as well as the commission and committees that we have in this city. And I took my first act as a councilperson very seriously, which was to appoint two people that I thought would be highly qualified to address things like Brentwood Park to help me, as well as looking at things like the playhouse and the Arts Commission. I know that's largely a school board issue, but we will be working with them to keep that alive, because I can't think of a better thing to have in a community. I'm sorry to hear that it's closing. What I want to do real quick is Jason Camalas, who I appointed to the Parks Commission, and he is experienced in many different levels, and he gives me an after-action report, and it's a very lengthy document. I did my best to summarize it one. I believe he deserves a voice. So Jason Camalas provided a comprehensive update on PAX and the Fairview Parks Steering Committee. PAX meeting's key topics included FY 25-26 budget for the CIP, with a focus on increasing transparency and community involvement in parks projects. The skate park expansion was approved, with plans for youth outreach and art integration despite some concerns raised by commissioners. Administrative matters covered elections, memorial donations, and efforts to improve park safety and accessibility. Commissioners also addressed issues like off-leash dogs and homelessness, activity engaging with residents to resolve concerns. The Fairview Parks Steering Committee's updates centered on ongoing restoration projects, habitat preservation, and long-term planning efforts. The committee emphasized protecting park resources by maintaining restrictions on certain groups to mitigate potential legal and financial risks. Both groups are committed to fostering community engagement and advancing park improvements, ensuring long-term sustainability and safety. The updates reflect ongoing collaboration to enhance park services and resources for the community. And that was a very short summary of a long document Jason provided to me, and I commend him for the excellent work, and I want the Parks folks to know that the Brentwood Park is very much in there and very much a focus of mine to get that done. And also, thanks to Jeff Harland before me, who we want to, so don't worry, hang in there. And to close out my talk on the commissions, the Arts Commission, Fisher Darian is the one that I, he had actually been, he was previously on arts, but currently I reappointed him to arts, and man, is he doing a great job. And I think that, I listened to every single minute of the three-hour Arts Commission meeting last time and most of the one prior to that, and one of the tasks I had for Fisher was please, please develop a strong and thorough understanding of the municipal code and how it works and what it means for you as a commission. I've said this to all my commissioners, actually, and boy, did Fisher do that. He was able to actually give me some education on that front. So what I'm not happy about, and I'm not disparaging any one individual, is that I do not believe that the Arts Commission is functioning to their full capacity. I believe that it's clear in the municipal code that they do have the authority to make their recommendations and advice directly to council, and they have so far not been able to do that. And I'm hoping and I'm asking that that be a focus for the commission going forward, because I'm going to be watching every minute of every Arts Commission meeting going forward to ensure that they are being able to function within their roles as commissioner to the highest level of their authority. There were things in the commission, they were told that they need, they could benefit from some commission training. They asked for, they wanted to have a subcommittee to, it's impossible to address these things in one commission meeting. So as we do on the council, we have study sessions that are public. They too are empowered to have subcommittees themselves, and they were told that that would be at the discretion of the city manager. And so that, these are things that I want looked at and that I expect to be looked at going forward, and I will be happy to hear recommendations from all my commissions. And that is it for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pettis. Next up from District 1 is Councilmember Mike Beulie.
Thank you, Mayor, staff, members of the community. Yeah, got a lot to cover since the 15th, when we were here last time. And typically, I go through and tell you what I've covered in between meetings, but there's quite a laundry list, and I want to get to an issue. So I'm just going to kind of tick off some of the things that I've been up to since our last session, and then I'll move into some items that I want to talk about. But yeah, since last time, I was fortunate to get a tour of Mercy House, excuse me, of Share Ourselves, the medical center over there in Adams. Larry Haynes of Mercy House and Kristy Ward, the CEO of Save Ourselves, were nice enough to give me a little private tour over there. It's adjacent to my neighborhood. Unfortunately, I had a calendaring mishap, so I missed the ribbon cutting, but I built up enough goodwill with them that they didn't hold it against me too difficultly. I also, as part of my kind of understanding different issues and things in the city, I asked Larry to get me by one of the Home Key operations that Mercy House is involved in, and I went by the facility that we have over off of Newport Boulevard, and I got a tour, and I got to see the permanent housing situation. And I also thank staff, and Nate Robbins in particular, and John Bagan. They took the time to walk me through the Bridge Center and kind of see all the activities and things that are going over there. Took an opportunity to grab a coffee with Chamber of Commerce, David Hatchcock and Julian Harkness, so they kind of advised me on their role with the city and the things they're doing to help us generate revenue and business activity around the city. I was fortunate to reach out to Andoril, and I had one of the founders, Matt Grimm, and his chief of staff, give me a tour of the facility. I learned that they've brought 1,500 jobs to their Costa Mesa location. 250 of those employees are working here in the city. One of their primary concerns they brought to my attention, this will not shock anybody, is affordable housing. They're bringing in a lot of employees from out of state, and they'd love to house most of them here within the city. So it was nice to learn that. I mean, they're a very valuable member of our community. I learned that they're constantly bringing in business travelers. They keep the Westin about 80% filled up just with their travelers. Obviously, all these travelers come into our community, they go into our restaurants, they use all of our things, and they're a great partner in the city, and I thank them for giving me the opportunity to get over there. With Mayor Stevens, I went down to the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast this last week, and that was a very powerful event. Chief was down there with us, and Gaddy Vasquez gave a real emotional and stem-winder of a speech. And then I got the pleasure of going to the OC Marathon, getting up at 4:30 in the morning so that we could be there at 5:00, the mayor and myself. And again, the mayor was gracious enough to hand me the microphone. I got to yell at the 20,000 racers to start their engines or something to that effect, and those are one of the nice perks of sitting up here. I don't know about the getting up that early, but getting down there, being engaged in the community. And then the mayor and I hustled over to the finish line over at OC Fair. We were down at the starting line at Fashion Island around 5:00 in the morning, got to OC Fair by around 7:00, 7:30, and the first 13-milers were crossing the finish line about 7:30. And then because of the staggered start, the actual winners came across. So all that was well and good. Kind of to pivot off what Councilmember Pettis said, these are a couple of the issues I wanted to talk about, and, you know, he talked about the committee meetings or whatnot. You may have heard in the last several times I've been up here, I've stressed what I think is the importance of our volunteer constituted committees. You know, we're up here as a city council, and we're supposed to be the voice of the city, and we want a community-engaged government, and I think a vital tool in that is our committees. And so the question is, you know, how do we first constitute these committees? How do we get information on these various departments that they're heads of and get engaged and get that information to staff, get that information to council? And we incorporate all this in how we govern the city. And a shout-out to Jen Tanaka. I do follow a lot of her writings, and I didn't zoom in, if you will, to the Arts Commission, but she had a very insightful analysis of kind of what transpired that night and some of the issues with how committees function and how they operate and what their authority is or is not, as delivered to them under our municipal code. And there was some confusion, based on what I read, as to the length and extent of their authority. Are they entitled under the code to? extent of their authority. Are they entitled under the code to investigate and constitute subcommittees and look into various issues? And then with that subcommittee, have those reports delivered back to us or whatnot? Or do those subcommittees need to first be approved at staff level or whatnot? And again, just like Councilmember Pettis had stated, I'm not casting aspersions or anything on anybody. It's in the short time I've been around here, I'd like to think that what people take away from me, I'm just about learning information, seeing how things are supposed to work. And then, once we have all that information, potentially acting And there's similar issues, I think, with Five PAC and the Parks Commission. We've got these citizens who are donating extensive amount of their time. Lots of them are very skilled and knowledgeable in their specific areas, and it's a resource we should rely upon, and they should be given a citizen voice in what we do in this community. So I think I'm going to go a step further than Councilmember Pettis. And what I'd like to see, so that we can clear up the confusion, and I think it was a legitimate... I think a lot of people were kind of caught off guard with how that Arts Commission meeting rolled out and the demands that were being made, and staff did the best job they could with that curveball that came at them to try to explain and understand and answer questions on procedure. But I would really like us to schedule, agendize a study session as to what the ordinances in this city state, as to what is the role and the authority and the extent of our committees, and what they can and cannot do, and what approval they do and do not need. And I think we need to clear that up so that as a city council, we know what to expect from our committees, and the committees know what's the extent of their role in the city and in city governance. So I'd ask if that's appropriate for us to agendize that, some sort of a study session, so we can clear that up, not just for arts, but for all the committees, so we know what their role is and what to do with the information and whatnot. I'm going to pivot just briefly to one other issue. I know on the agenda, we're going to deal with the CIP as it relates to the 24-25 budget, but I want to talk about the 25-26 budget and the CAN impact there. Mayor Stevens made a few comments at our last session, I think it was a study session, about my understanding, and I adopt this, that 24-25, it looks like we were kind of hit with an unforeseen economic downturn, which gives us the option to waive or do something with the 5% CAN as it relates to CIP. I'm not convinced that it's so easy to just reach into the 25-26 CAN funds when we're going through the 25-26 budget process. So my ask to staff, as we're going through this 25-26 budget process, my sense is that the only alternative we're looking at for 25-26 is to waive the CAN 100% of it and use that to fill the perceived shortfall or the perceived economic stress we may have in 25-26. I want staff to give us an alternative that doesn't touch CAN so that we can be prepared to look at the budget that goes down that road in case legally we're not entitled to touch it. Last thing I'll touch on is the Playhouse. I just want to give a shout out to... My wife and I have enjoyed going to plays there over the years. The reality is 17, 20 bucks for a night at the movies versus 10, 12 bucks to watch some passionate actors, a lot of them very talented, giving it their all, sometimes hitting a home run, sometimes kind of not. But the beauty of that, the beauty of live art, I just enjoy doing it. So anything that staff can do, and I know Mayor Stevens made a comment, that's great to hear that he has some ideas, but with all of these palatial drama centers, Costa Mesa High and Estancia High, it seems to me we could find a platform for these guys to keep chugging along. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up from District... Yeah, you can clap. A smattering of applause for Councilmember Beulie. Next up from District Two is Councilmember Lauren Camaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very brief this evening. I just want to take a quick moment and thank Public Works, along with them, police and fire, for providing services for the 21st Annual Orange County Marathon. I know that's a logistical nightmare. They had a... Police has to provide, you know, traffic blockage. Fire has to be ready for a number of large to small emergencies, and Public Works has to prep all of the lanes and roads. So I just want to take a moment, not only thank those three, but I also want to thank staff. I know that staff works very hard to try and put all this stuff together, and that does not go unrecognized. So I just want to take a moment and thank staff for that as well. I do want to take a moment, and I want to make a quick announcement. I'd like to announce that the former planning chair, Adam Erith, and Melanie Erith gave birth to their son, Grayson. Give me a second here. I forgot to write this down. Six pounds, six and a half pounds. He was born on April 27th, and he's now a fifth-generation Costa Mason. So I want to wish them congratulations and health to their family. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, next up from District Three, Councilmember Mark. Andrea Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Councilmember Reynolds, I had other things to talk about tonight, but there's really only one thing on my mind right now. Look, what happened tonight was just incredibly frustrating and deeply disappointing, and frankly, a reminder of the fragility of our system of government. Too often, our leaders seem to forget the limits of their own power. We are a part-time council at best, all of us. We all have full-time jobs. We show up here every other Tuesday and make decisions. But we should all know that where the rubber meets the road, where things actually get done, from the paving to the meals at the senior center, to Fairview Developmental Center negotiations in Sacramento, that all happens at the staff level. Our agendas are in Spanish because staff made that happen. Yes, we give direction, but that is all we give. As city manager, Lorian knew that deeply. She knew how to motivate and recruit and train staff. Frankly, I think we all agree that that was one of the key areas of focus for the city. She kept us financially stable through COVID, when other cities were turning to sales tax increases just to balance their budgets, but we didn't do that. We thrived. She prioritized our most vulnerable residents, creating a program out of nothing to respond to families about to become homeless, and as Councilmember Reynolds mentioned, truly changing the standards of acceptability for how we treat our Spanish-speaking community. She was an excellent city manager, in part because she balanced the needs and requests of all seven of us with the needs of the city, not one or two, all of us. I am exceedingly proud of the work that we accomplished under her leadership, and frankly, I am embarrassed that this is how we have chosen to the woman to treat the woman who so capably led our city for so long. I would remind the public that we have seen this movie before, and it did not end well. I am extremely concerned that instead of getting some of our priorities across the finish line, we are now going to spend the next 18 months mired in self-imposed chaos. I will do what I can on that front, but as has become abundantly clear in recent weeks and tonight in particular, my particular brand of reasonableness is now very clearly in the minority. So I urge you, the public, to speak out and keep paying attention. Many of you have memories that go back not that long when we did this before. Frankly, you paying attention is the only way anything ever changes, and I'll be the first to admit that right now, I need your help. I have a lot more to say. This is what I could come up with off the cuff right now because I feel obligated to say something and not treat tonight as business as usual. But if you saw my face right now, you would understand how livid I feel about the events of tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up from District Four is our Mayor Pro Tem, Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, Mayor of the public. Thank you, students that are joining us today. Three community... Two community comments, two ribbon-cutting updates, three requests for staff, and then one adjournment request for the mayor. But I do want to just take a moment, real briefly, to just acknowledge and thank Arts City Manager Lorraine Phil Harrison. This decision was not a light one for me. I do want to do more praise at this moment in time. Thanks to her work, we have a really healthy budget surplus of $60 million. We've seen more community outreach to marginalized communities. Staff morale has been at a real high. And I want to acknowledge a few of the highlights of her tenure before I move on to my regular re-plan comments. So for that, I'll say thank you, Lorian, for your service. There's more to say, but for now, that's what I will share with the public. Community updates. Mayor Stevens, happy to join you in finding a solution for the Playhouse. It is in my district, and I'm happy to see them advocating for themselves, not only here in council, but at the school board meetings and in the press. Truly, activism lives and dies with the residents, and I am hopeful and willing to help them find a solution for a new home for their Playhouse. And second, I also want to echo support for Brentwood Park. That was a park I did support adding to the CIP priority list about two years ago. I know it's just below Shalamar and Kitchen Level Park in priority, and I fully intend to support that project the moment we finalize those first two projects on the queue. But it's important that we give everyone a fair chance in Costa Mesa to have a great park access. And just because you're east of Costa Mesa doesn't mean you can't have new things either. For ribbon-cutting updates, I had the pleasure of joining Councilmembers Pettis and Mayor Stevens at the Share Ourselves opening. What a beautiful facility to see open in Costa Mesa. For those that don't know, we're now at two Share Ourselves locations in Costa Mesa, the one at the Best Center in Ray and the one in Mesa Verde. So it's really good to see quality healthcare being done at an affordable price point, being offered to members of our community. And fun fact, a little tidbit for my adjournment, the legendary Jean Forbath was part of the founding of Share Ourselves. And I'll elaborate a little bit more of the end of my comments. I also had the pleasure of joining the Chamber of Commerce of Costa Mesa at the Ocean Pediatrics ribbon-cutting. Fun fact, that parcel of land actually is unincorporated, so if we can snag it up before someone else does, it'd be really good to add some sales tax revenue to Costa Mesa. Also, great facility, serving the east side residents, offering quality pediatric care for their children. For my three requests to staff, I'm echoing a couple of things that were already mentioned by the council members. First, I want to support Members Reynolds' efforts to pass a code of conduct for council. We've heard members of the public mention that before, and I'm happy to have that finally be codified. I also want to echo Members Pettis and Beulie's request for a study session for committee recalibration. And I want to elaborate a little bit on that. We've struggled in this council since my tenure to really have a set definition for committees. We remove committees' ability to do ad-hocs because they themselves are doing them without council approval, leading to more staff time, being diverted from council priorities. And now we're kind of seeing the other end where the commissioners and committee members, some of whom want to have more of a say. I think it's very important for this council to define each committee and give it a concrete goal to work for. I don't think committees should be standing things. Committees should have a purpose, and they should conclude when that purpose ends. Commissions are standing. And one thing I'll say is, I do not see, and I could be wrong, I don't really see a concrete purpose for the Arts Commission yet. Because Planning Commission approves or denies projects based on general code. Parks commissioners approve and deny trees, removals, but it's still a vote they take that we can call up if we want to, but that's their decision. And I don't see that for Arts Commission. So I think it's time for us to define the commissions and committees, see if they should still exist. If they do, what their purpose is going to be. And I think that'll clip a lot of confusion we have right now on that level. Finally, my adjournment request. I mentioned Jean Forbath earlier with the Share Ourselves building, and that's really who I want adjourned this meeting for. For those that don't know, Jean Forbath, in my opinion, is probably the most close enough to Saint in Costa Mesa. Jean is dear to my heart for a lot of reasons. One, because I am a product of her legacy of one of her institutions, of SOI. But Jean was involved with Share Ourselves and also ate out the family. Three institutions that have helped countless people in our community. Countless people who, at a point in time, needed a place to call home, like for SOI, needed a way to get good Christmas gifts to the family, or a place for quality healthcare in Share Ourselves. I know the mayor's going to do a nice tribute, and I just want to do a prelude to that, but I do want to say that in testament to Jean's life, it's, in my eyes, no coincidence that she passed away on Easter Sunday, an hour after the Pope. When it comes to creating last institutions, the Catholic Church has no equal, except maybe in my eyes, Jean Forbath. Thank you, Mayor Stevens.
Amen to that, Mayor Pro Tem. And I've got, of course, a lot of things that's happened since the last meeting that I could talk about, but I'm devoting all of my comments to Jean Forbath and her legacy. And so to start, let's start with the present. On Saturday, May 3rd, I was honored to join with Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, Councilmember Pettis, Chief Lawrence, a fire crew headed by Chuck Torres and Captain Chuck Torres, and Sergio Escobar and Yves, who... And we went to the grand opening of the Share Ourselves clinic on the corner of Adams and Mesa Verde. Just some information about the clinic. There are 12 medical exam rooms, a behavioral health office, six dental chairs, two optometry chairs, an expanded pharmacy, dedicated care management services to help residents navigate health and social systems. Share Ourselves embodies what it means to be a whole person, addressing not just physical health, but also mental, social, and economic well-being. At the heart of Share Ourselves is a simple but powerful belief that everyone, regardless of their circumstances, deserves access to high-quality healthcare. The clinic and its other facilities in Costa Mesa on Meyer Street and on Superior represent more than just a building. It's a beacon of hope for many. By prioritizing the health of every resident, we create a more vibrant, equitable, and resilient Costa Mesa. When we care for the most vulnerable among us, we lift up the entire community. Now, some words about Jean. Jean Marie Forbath was born in St. Albans, New York in 1930. She was the youngest of four children in an Irish Catholic family. She and her family moved to Hollywood in 1933, and her father was a cameraman at RKO Pictures. She attended Conity Girls High School in Los Angeles, becoming student body president. She went on to get her bachelor's and master's degree in English literature from Immaculate Heart College in Los Angeles. Jean and her husband Frank, along with Karen McGlynn, started Share Ourselves in 1970 when they were parishioners of St. John the Baptist Church in the St. John the Baptist parking lot. Parenthetically, that's where my children went to school for 20 years, and we were also parishioners, so it's a hallowed ground for me. They started Share Ourselves as a way to provide food and medical aid to the farmworkers who, at the time, lived in our community. Later, Share Ourselves began offering medical clinic services. It expanded to dental services in 1988. Share Ourselves has grown to become a model nonprofit organization, providing the highest quality, safety, net services to the homeless and low-income populations throughout Orange County. It now has nine facilities throughout Orange County, and as I mentioned, three now in the city of Costa Mesa. Jean was also a founding board member of Save Our Youth, as Mayor Pro Tem Chavez mentioned, or SOI, and served as executive director and treasurer during her 22 years on the Jean was a relentless advocate, a humble servant, and the heart of Share Ourselves and SOI and the other organizations that she participated in. She taught us that no effort is too small when grounded in love and justice. Her life remains... Sorry, her life reminds us of what's possible when we lead with the of what's possible when we lead with heart, serve with humility, and never turn away from the needs of others. She has a beautiful family. She had a wonderful, beloved husband, Frank, who worked alongside of her in her efforts. Her family is watching now. Some are in the chambers right now, and I appreciate you being here. As Mayor Protem said, and it's quite fitting that Jean passed away on Easter Sunday, within an hour of Pope Francis, if you can believe that. Tomorrow, we start the conclave in our faith. Services for Jean will be on May 9th at St. Simon and Jude Church in Huntington Beach at 1:00. And you're welcome to join there. May she rest in peace, and we will adjourn the meeting in her memory and honor. And now, I'd like to share a short video where you can hear Jean, in her own words, on video, talk about the origins of Share Ourselves. And so if you could, please play that video.
I think my mother had a big influence on me. I was a child of the Depression, and so she used to give sandwiches to poor men who were out of work who'd come to the back door, and she always welcomed them. She was always one to help anybody in need. In the '70s, my husband and I were part of a group at St. John the Baptist Catholic Church. It was an adult education group where we were studying the social doctrine of the Catholic Church. And that means, what does our church say about, what do we owe to our neighbors? We went out to see if there really were needs, and what we found were astounding. We helped the Children's Hot Lunch Program in Santa Ana. We helped the schools that didn't have cafeterias at the time because of the earthquake, so we had made sack lunches and brought all different kinds of things. That's how we started and grew. We first started in a little tiny room at St. John's. It was about three sizes of a closet. We were looking for a name, and one of our volunteers, Hugh Mulhern, came up with the idea. Let's call ourselves Share Ourselves, and we would just say it's SOS. The stream of people coming just got too much, and we left the church surroundings and became an independent nonprofit organization in 1970. We had a very low-key fundraising. We were very blessed to have large donors, but then a lot of the donations came from our normal donors. So we had enough money to put a down payment and buy the property on Superior. Our organization brought to the foreground that there were needs in Costa Mesa that people were closing their eyes to. We were out trying to attack the causes of poverty. We found all kinds of immediate needs that needed to be taken care of. We saw that people needed more than food and clothing to really survive. They needed help with their rent. They had no means of transportation to get to jobs. And then we found a lot of people who were coming to us without medical care. So we recruited some of our volunteer doctors. We also had a dental clinic that was staffed by volunteer dentists. In 1970, we started our Adopt a Family program at Christmas time because we felt that there should be something special rather than just give out the normal bags of food. They don't actually meet them, but we give them all the details about them, and they imagine who they are and if they really know them. And so it's been a very successful program. We still do have our one fundraiser, which is our Celebrity Chef's Dinner. Mostly, it's just people voluntarily liked what we were doing. And we had a newsletter that we sent out about every quarter, and it got tremendous results. One of our major things that my husband and I always wanted to push was that it was not just there to give out things, but we wanted to change the structures that were causing people to stay in poverty. Like, we advocated for the city of Costa Mesa for low-income housing, and we were very much advocates for them to accept community development funds. At the time, we had a very conservative city council. I spent half my life with the poor supervisors and city councils advocating for things for the poor. It's really very gratifying that it has continued and expanded and brought in so many people, not only to be helped, but to help. That's one of my most gratifying feelings, all the opportunities that SOS has given to people to actually share themselves and touch the poor and feel, know what it's really like. And I think that's been one of my most gratifying thoughts about the whole organization.
And the other thing you can do to honor Jean is go to the Share Ourselves Wild and Crazy Taco Night on May 14th at the Fairgrounds. It's a great fundraiser. Okay, so with that, City Attorney Paul Barlow, do you have any report?
I do want to clarify, I think I left out of my report out that the determination was without cause of the agreement. And then finally, I did want to also announce that Bruce Prate, who is a well-known lawyer involved in police work and in law enforcement, litigation, defense, has recently joined our firm. So I just wanted to announce that, and that's all I have tonight.
All right, great. Now, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are routine and shall be acted on in one motion unless they're pulled by either a council member, a member of the public, or staff. Madam Clerk, do we have any items that have been pulled?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then I'll ask Mayor Protem Chavez. I seconded it. Let's call for the question.
Oh, we'll call vote, please.
Oh, yeah, that's good. That's right. We'll call it.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Councilmember Beulah?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
My recusal for...
Thank you. Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yeah, thanks for reminding me, Councilmember. I need to recuse from number three because of a campaign donation from Everett Dory. Other than that, yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, good. So let's read the title for number one.
Thank you. For item one, this is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to uphold the Director of Development Services determination that conditional use permit PA 2123 to establish a cannabis storefront located at 1687 Orange Avenue doing business as King's Crew has expired.
Okay, so we've had a request by the applicant that this item be continued until the June 3 meeting. And so we'll have no staff presentation. I said earlier that about this, I can open it up to the public for, to hear comments, or just to keep the motion, the item, open. So let's do this. Let's open it up to the public. You don't have to speak if anybody wants to speak now. Otherwise, we'll just keep it open and move it on and continue it to June 3. Yeah, but you're welcome to come and speak if you wish now. Oh, excuse me. Let's put it in the mic on. There you go.
Pardon me. My name is Earl Lund Jr., and I live at 218 Ogles Street. And one of the things we had questioned three years ago was the parking study and the whole flow of the parking there because that's a very congested spot. So I don't know if you've looked at the map of where it's located there, but the in-and-out is right next to 17th Street. It's right at 17th and Orange. And in fact, I actually was hit by someone right in front of what used to be the cleaners that was there because it was just, it's a lot of parking, a lot of access, a lot of cars flowing through there. And they had ignored that parking study, so they pulled it back and said, yes, we have to do a whole parking study, but we'd never heard anything that was ever resolved how they're going to deal with the in-and-out access, parking, et cetera, to make sure it flows properly for safety.
Okay.
That was the issue.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, so we just hold this open at this point? Do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to speak?
Nobody on Zoom, and just do motion and second to continue.
Okay, I'll move to continue. We need a second. Second by Councilmember Chavez. And let's call for the question by voice vote.
Okay. Councilmember Pettis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Councilmember Beulah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Next, we have no old business, we have one new business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Yes, this is the Capital Asset Needs Ordinance Emergency Exception and Capital Improvement Program Project Deferrals for Fiscal Year 2024-25, Presentation by Ms. Molina, Finance Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It is my honor to bring forth before you tonight the Fiscal Year 2425 CIP project deferrals that have been presented to the City Council a couple times already. Did want to take a moment to thank public work staff for all of their effort and work, and also going through all the various committees to discuss the project deferrals as directed by the City Council. As you may recall, in June of 2024, the City Council adopted an all-funds budget of about $239.8 million, with a general fund budget of $189.9 million. As you can see here, salaries and benefits make up 70% of the general fund budget. As well, the general fund budget, over 50%, is dedicated to our public safety departments. Both our police and fire and rescue department make up over 50% of this amount. As discussed at the March study session, when we presented the Fiscal Year 2425 mid-year budget, where we brought forth an overview of the general fund budget and the status of our revenues at that moment, we presented a revenue shortfall of about $3.6 million to address the current fiscal year. City staff had already gone through a couple of reductions before coming to the City Council. We reduced the million-dollar bond payment for the fire station as we are not currently have that payment due in 2425. However, we do have that in 2526 proposed budget at this time. We also identified about $1.8 million in salary savings, which we went ahead and took down from the general fund budget before coming to the City Council for the balance of $3.6 million. We identified about $700,000 of street sweeping costs that could be picked up by the gas tax fund, wanted to move those costs over there to save the general fund that amount, and came forth to the City Council list of about $2.9 million of capital deferrals, which are before you tonight. At this moment, I will go ahead and let Director Satharaman take it forward for the CIP deferrals.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. Mr. Mayor and City Council. So just want to give you a little background on the CIP. As I mentioned earlier, the city has 72 active CIP projects and 30 pending CIP projects with a funding of almost $93 million. So with the requested deferral of approximately $2.9 million, just want to point out, we'll still have 96 projects in our CIP with $90 million in capital projects to be implemented over the next two to three years. With that context, we initially proposed a total of 10 projects that we want to take funding off of, defer these projects to handle the shortfall. They add up to approximately $2.9 million. And then we took this information after, we brought this information to you at the March meeting, and with your recommendation, we took this to Five Pack. So Five Pack, Finance and Pension Advisory Committee, generally agreed with the staff recommendation and supported the emergency exception for the CAN, Capital Asset Needs for 2425. They did recommend that three of these projects be taken off the list, and they identified City Hall cast iron drain re-pipe, fifth-floor air handlers, and City Hall heaters with a funding of almost $750,000. They said, remove these from your list and come up with some other projects for council consideration. So we came to you back again on April 22nd, and we replaced those projects with the ones highlighted in the presentation. It's a cast iron re-pipe at 254, sewer line improvement, and senior center improvements. So this alternative proposal was presented to you at the April 22 meeting, and we received, again, input from several members, mainly that the sewer line project and the senior center project should be retained in the CIP. It was identified that the golf course and tennis center project has additional funding available that could be deferred. And we also heard from council members that the golf course, which is Costa Mesa Country Club, is a city-owned revenue generating facility, and we should continue making improvements to both the golf course grounds as well as clubhouse. So this is the input that we received. So this is, this exhibit shows the alternative with the tennis center and the sewer line project removed and additional funding taken off of the golf course and tennis center improvements. So just want to summarize. So we have three options for deferrals as shown in this exhibit. The original, which is our staff initial proposal, which is, I'm calling it Alternative 1. Alternative 2, which takes into account the Five Pack recommendation. And Alternative 3 is the input that we heard from some of the city council members on April 22. With this, just want to point out, staff continues to recommend originally proposed alternative. And I want to point out that when we came up with this original list, we did put some thought into it. You know, we looked at all the projects and identified the ones that we felt has the least impact to our community, our senior public, our vulnerable population, everything, and came up with that list of projects. So we do continue recommending that particular list of projects, which is our originally staff-proposed alternative. So next steps, again, you know, our city ordinance has a capital asset needs reserve requirement, which states that 5% of annual general fund be set aside towards capital asset account, Fund 401. So staff is requesting emergency exception authorization to address the potential shortfall due to economic downturn and authorize us to remove $2.9 million worth of projects. And our recommendation is our original alternative, and we are here to hear your recommendation. And again, just to summarize, the recommended actions are authorize emergency exception, provide direction on the approved projects that may be deferred. And as required by the ordinance, there is a financial plan to reinstate the $2.9 million in deferred projects. Again, that's highlighted, that's in the staff report, and basically, it's reinstate the funding over a 10-year period. With that, I'm here to answer any questions along with our finance director.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions for our staff? No? No questions, really? All right. Go ahead. Mayor Protem?
No, I had a motion by way.
Oh, yeah, we got to wait till the public, but you got to hear from the public. All right. Okay, let's just open it up to the public then.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ralph Toboda. I'm speaking for myself, not for Five Pack, although I may reference the meeting. As you know, Five Pack approved the waiver and offered some alternatives that staff just reviewed with the council. Personally, I support approving the waiver, but I would ask that you defer any action on the replenishment of the $2.9 million for several reasons. One of them, primary, is there's not enough information known at this point in time. You haven't been presented with FY 2526 operational budget. The waiver amount for 2526 at the study session was estimated as $6.6 million, although that's a preliminary number, so that's not finalized. Again, the operating budget wasn't presented. You don't know exactly what that will be. You don't know what the operating budget would be. You haven't been able to see the details yet of the expenditures for the operating budget. There may be some priorities. You may have a priority on a capital project that may override an item in the operating budget. That needs to be looked at. I think Mayor Stevens was asking, kind of poking at that at the study session, asking for some information on expenditures, specifically consultant costs. So there may be items in the operating budget that you haven't seen yet that may impact your decision on the waiver replenishment. Also, staff is, I guess, proposing a 10-year payback replenishing. Although, looking on page four, page four of four, it talks about, it talks about would amount to 290K per year for fiscal years in which revenues exceed expenditures. I would ask that you delete that provision. I think CAN should be repaid regardless of whether revenues exceed or don't exceed expenditures. And I personally would, 10 years seems an excessive amount of time for 2.9 million. I would probably limit that to five years. But also, if staff's going to ask for a 10-year replenishment of the 2526, that could be 600, let's say, excuse me, if that waiver is 6.6 million over 10 years, that's 660K per year. But that's, again, preliminary. You don't know exactly what these numbers are yet. So again, I would approve waiving the 2.9 million, but hold off on a replenishment.
Okay, thank you. You got to your end. Yeah, yes, sir. Oh, hold on one second. I gotta, I gotta get you on. Art, good to see you. Thanks. You have the floor.
Mr. Stevens and Mayor Stevens and City Council, this is the second time I've been to this to give a talk. Talk last time about Jake Knapp, who played golf for me at Estancia, and he's doing very well. I was a, I was a 40-year teacher at Estancia High School. I'm still the current golf coach after 38 years, and we just won the league championship again. But I think that you should look really closely at taking away money from the golf course because it's a valuable asset to the city. I think you guys are making a lot of money and can make more with the changes that could be possibly made. I think additional cart pass would be a gigantic asset. I think improvement of the bunkers would be an asset, and maybe lengthening of the driving range to add more depth and chances for more people to practice going the other direction. Because if you've been to the golf course, it's completely packed every day, because I'm there almost every day. And we, you know, we were told to take one spot, then we got, you know, I always go about half an hour early so I can get one spot, then two spots, then three spots. But I think it's an asset you shouldn't be taking away the money from, because I think if you put the money into it now, this next year, it'll be a tremendous value for the city. And I think you should consider that. Let's see. I think that's it. I think the adult community would appreciate that. And I think the elementary, junior high school and high schools would approve this action. And I think it's a thing that you should consider before you make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Anybody on Zoom? Oh, sorry. Yes. You're welcome to come on out.
Thanks to you for the opportunity to speak very quickly. My name's Ted White. I'm a resident here in Costa Mesa for about the last eight years. I've been in the area since 1987. I play golf over at the courses here regularly, and I'm an old guy. But I see as well a very broad cross-section of residents and children at the courses. And we're not just talking about Costa Mesa. We're also talking about, you know, other local communities which take advantage of the facility. We have a lot of high school golf activity. We have a lot of elementary school activities that occur over there. I actually saw very young children with their parents, you know, hitting around on a putting green, things like that. Broadly speaking, you know, government is more about services and less about profit. But you have an asset in the golf course which is generating revenue and generating profit. If you look very quickly at the amount of play that occurs there, I went today and asked the pro shop approximately how many, you know, paying plays that occur there annually. It's about 200,000. And if you look at the ask for capital improvements in the facility, if I was looking at the sheet correctly, we're looking at like $500,000. If you were to do a little more than raise fees by two, like two or three dollars, it's covered. And you can go further than that as well. But I'm a paying member. I shouldn't even be bringing that up. But, I mean, fundamentally, you know, you don't have a lot of activities that make money. This is one. And it's kind of short-sighted to not fund that appropriately. It's been in the area for, what, six or seven decades now? I think, in fact, it was founded at about the year I was born. But it is a facility which is unmatched within probably 25, 25 miles or further. So I would ask the council and staff to strongly consider, you know, what it represents to the city of Costa Mesa and to recreational opportunities for this community and the area in general. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, phone number ending in 613, please.
613, you got the floor.
Yes, hi, good evening. So here we have the cut corners on our budget. The raise you guys gave yourself over the last year is not aging well, especially during this meeting when Councilmember Mar pointed out that you guys are essentially a part-time council. So this is not a, not aged well in terms of that. What I would focus on money-wise is fixing what you can using your reserves, because over time, it's going to get more expensive. I think you eliminate paying rent for people who can't afford to live here. That's a tough one to hear, to hear. I didn't see that on the chopping block, but I believe that we spend millions of dollars a year over the last few years on subsidizing people's rent. I didn't see that anywhere on the, on the chopping block. You know, again, there is no housing crisis. The only thing that's going on is not everyone is where they want, but this council, for whatever reason, there is a housing crisis. Again, fix the infrastructure, burn through the money you have, because as you wait, it's going to get more and more expensive to buy materials, to get things done. I would also consider how you look at your development process and realize that the city is built out and work on eliminating positions within the city that deal with housing and such. And as people retire, do not replace those positions, because we're built out. The other thing I would consider as well in the city, probably not going to be popular in the voting, voting, people in charge of voting for the city, is eliminate council compensation, insurance, and such. 100%. You did give yourselves a raise recently. How about no raise, eliminate all your pay? This is a volunteer position. I know some of you do, do rely on your income from this. To the detriment of many of us in the community, I think that should be eliminated. And then the other thing I think you need to consider is averaging the last five years of a budget and considering that for a current budget. Because 10 years ago, the budget for the city was 80, 90 million, now 183 million. It doubled, and that's sort of time. The spending is out of control.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, a couple more speakers. The next speaker is Josh, please.
Josh, you have the floor.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for making the difficult but necessary decision part ways with the city manager. I hope this decision empowers both the council and the many dedicated public servants who work tirelessly for this, tirelessly for this community. I also hope that the next city manager will bring stronger leadership and be a greater asset to the city. That said, I'm here to express my opposition to moving forward with the CAN Financial Emergency Declaration at this time. I understand the city is in a difficult financial position, and I am not entirely against a waiver if it is truly warranted. However, before declaring a financial emergency, the public deserves clarity on the steps taken so far. Specifically, we need to know what major contracts have been canceled or will be canceled outside of deferred capital projects in this budget and the following budget. Have any departments been restructured, or are there plans to restructure them to improve efficiency? Which non-essential programs have been or will be kept or frozen in the future, and what long-term plans are in place to avoid ending up in the same situation next year? If we don't make disciplined structural changes now, we risk repeating history, and the next time may be worse than what we saw in 2011. Before breaking the piggy bank, I urge you to exhaust every other option so these reserve funds remain available for future emergencies. Thank you for your time and your service to our city.
Thank you, Josh. Who's next?
Next speaker is Richard, please.
Richard, you have the floor.
Good evening, Rick Hoffman here. On the topic of deferred capital improvement projects, I have a suggestion. I recommend deferring the proposed $600,000 traffic signal at Belfast and Fairview Road. This signal would be only 200 feet away from the existing signal at McCormick. The signals at McCormick, Polo Reno, and Baker Street create gap in the traffic on Fairview that allow access from Belfast to get out on Fairview with relatively short waiting times. The Belfast intersection is significantly safer than the signalized intersections on Fairview. The intersections with signals have higher accident rates due to red light running. Waiting for a break in the traffic, as is required at an intersection such as Belfast, is actually safer, as shown in the 10-year statistics. Fairview is a six-lane artery that provides access to the 405 freeway. Let's at least take the time to consider the consequences of another traffic signal that is only a short block from an existing one. There are eight other T intersections into the Halecrest Track with no signals in addition to Belfast. I would suggest that a signal with a crosswalk would be more, would make more sense on Baker Street in the quarter-mile stretch between Fairview and College Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else?
Next speaker is Gary, please.
Gary, you have the floor.
Hello, City Council members and Mr. Mayor. My concern is, has to do with the golf course. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, have been for 40 years, and I am an avid golfer. I am at the golf course three days a week on average. I play a couple rounds a week there, and then I do practice. And what was said about the practice facility, about how busy it is, this last year has been almost horrendous, where in the, in the past few years, there, there wasn't any waiting as far as trying to get a spot to practice. And it is so busy now. It is a revenue maker for the city, although I am a member of the Costa Mesa Senior Men's Club. We have 200 members. We have two tournaments a month there, and our groups, many of our players play there regularly, aside from the tournaments as well. The bunkers on that golf course, the sand traps are, they are in such need of improvement. There are many, many different areas of that golf course where cart pass would be a major improvement and would be just an upgrade that, that that golf course has needed for 25 years. Because of the amount of play and the tremendous amount of play that golf course is getting, the, the, it is, it's very hard for the grounds crew to maintain the golf course in the manner that it should be maintained because of the amount of play and the amount of carts that are running through the golf course. The sprinkler system on the golf course is so antiquated, it's beyond, it's, it's almost beyond repair, where the maintenance people are out there digging holes all day long, every day for broken manes, broken sprinklers. This is an ongoing, you know, project for them that never ends. And unfortunately, because that sprinkler system is so antiquated, that the sprinkler system waters the sand traps. And that's one of the reasons our sand traps are, are in such bad condition. Deferring the money for the golf course is one of the worst things that the council could consider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Cynthia, please.
Cynthia, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember Cynthia McDonald. I object to taking any funds away from the tennis center. That facility has been long neglected by the city and has only recently received lighting improvements that were promised over 10 years ago. You need to do something about the dilapidated and positively disgusting restrooms. Maybe I should be glad there are restrooms, but these are from the 70s, and they look like it, and they smell like it. They have to burn candles in the restrooms to mask the smell from the very old plumbing. One way you could fund this is, yeah, get rid of that Belfast signal. There's $600,000 that you could keep for the golf course and the tennis center improvements. I see I've got some time left. With respect to the Costa Mesa Playhouse, there is a facility on Fairview Developmental Center, an auditorium, that could be used for that. Other state property, they have preserved some of the old buildings up at the Sonoma Regional Center, and recently Fred C. Nels in Whittier. They took the old chapel on what was a And recently, Fred C. Nell's in Whittier, they took the old chapel on what was a boys' school, is what they call it, you know? But basically, it was juvie. And they made it into a food hall. It's very popular. Repurposing buildings on these old state facilities is very helpful. But a great place for our playhouse could be that auditorium. But yes, please do get the Belfast signal off the list of projects and keep the tennis center and the golf course on. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's close public comment. I'm ready to make a motion. And, you know, everybody kind of listen to this and if people have amendments or obviously a substitute motion, you're welcome to do so. I'm going to go really slowly for my own benefit because it's hard to read some of my writing. Looking now on page one of the staff report, I'm going to go through the staff's recommendations, accept some, add some and delete some. So please follow along with me. Authorize the emergency exception clause of the capital asset needs ordinance under section 2-209.282, economic downturn for this fiscal year 2425. For number two, which is the direction on what to remove from the capital improvement, my motion will include the original recommendation of staff, which can be found in the left column under original on page nine of our PowerPoint presentation. And regarding the financial plan to reinstate the 2.9 million under the CAN, I'm going to follow some of Mr. Taboda's suggestions. And that is to approve it with the following modifications. Remove item number A, which says that, you know, only restore it if revenues exceed expectations. So it will read as follows. Reinstate the funding over a five, not a 10-year period, to ensure a fiscally sustainable general fund budget. And then I have a number four and a number five that's not in the staff report. So I'll go slowly and I'm happy to answer any questions. And this has to do in responsive to some comments that were made in his comment by Councilmember Beulah, which I agree with. Direct staff to bring forth options for the 2025 and 2026 budget. Creative options that include the following, just as options. Repealing or amending CAN. Using our reserves that we've built up. Terminating or potentially cutting our contracts, including consultant contracts. And eliminating vacant positions, which I know from my discussions on Five PAC is already being considered. And also bringing forth additional capital improvement projects for us to consider deferring to meet the gap. Finally, a number five. And I want to bring, show this to the public and how the council understand what I'm referring to. Back in June of 2009, regarding the golf course, the council, remember that was a recessionary year, removed 2.5% of the golf course improvement fund. And I'd like the staff to bring back, just for consideration again, whether we restore that 2.5% to 5%. And I'd like to, in my motion, just thank Director Seth Araman and Director Melina for a very nice memo. So that's my motion. I don't know whether I'll get a second. If I get a second, I'll look at, I got a second.
I have a friendly amendment.
Yeah. Friendly amendment? Yes, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before, sorry.
Second by Gamaros.
By Gamaros. Apologies for jumping the gun. I wanted to second originally. For number five, the golf course review, can we also review the fees for the tennis center? I've had a lot of conversations with the operators and it seems that we're very below market in terms of the fees that they provide.
Sure. We can add that. No problem. Second? You're good with it? Okay. So let me explain then. I got a second. We've got a friendly amendment. I'm still open to friendly amendments. Obviously, you can make a substitute motion if you want. Let me just kind of go through my thought process. First of all, there's some confusion. We don't need to declare an economic emergency. We just need to declare that there's an economic downturn, which I think clearly is. And then the language of the CAN ordinance is interesting because it's not entirely clear whether it has to be an unforeseen economic downturn or just an economic downturn. But I think in this case, under the circumstances, since we're in the middle of the year, I think we can make the finding that in this case, it was unforeseen. With respect to the items that we are going to defer, I'm okay with the staff's recommendation. I appreciate Five PAC's input and those were very much considered. Also regarding alternative number three, I really appreciate the people that came out and spoke regarding the golf course. Make some more comments about that in a minute. So that's your number two. I was persuaded by Mr. Taboda, who's been on our Five PAC for many years, about not tying the restoration of the 2.9 million to when revenues exceed our expectations, but actually building that restoration into future budgets, including '26, '25, '26. Liked what he said about accelerating it for five years. Regarding the other items, I'm dubious about whether, based on what we saw at the study session, whether we'll be able to, in good faith, restore what is now estimated to be a approximately $6 to $6.5 million shortfall. So I think we need to be very creative there. And that includes putting the CAN ordinance on the table for consideration about, as I said, repealing or amending. And it includes using reserves that we've built up and all the other items that I mentioned. As for the golf course, just a couple notes. In this great report that was done by Director Seth Araman and Melina, the bottom line is the golf course drops to the city of Costa Mesa in the last year, $3.7 million. That pays for a lot in the city, a lot. And over the last six years, I asked for this information, the golf course has dropped to the city of Costa Mesa's bottom-line budget, $18.5 million. In addition to that, it brings great joy to many people, thousands of people who play every year. I think one of the public speakers said 200,000 people. I don't doubt that. And children and so forth. So I really appreciate the work that Mesa Verde Partners does as our partner, Danny Lane in particular, Kyle Wilson, and everybody that works so hard and our new superintendent who's doing a spectacular job. But the one thing that's not in this report is how much general fund money, which we're restoring here, we're keeping this based on my motion, how much general fund money has been put into the golf course? And according to Danny Lane, the answer to that, at least since 1992, so 33 years, is zero. Zero general fund money. All of the improvements of the golf course have come from the Golf Course Improvement Fund, which, as I mentioned earlier, was cut in half to address the 2009, you know, recession. So those are all the reasons for my motion. I appreciate the second. I appreciate the friendly amendment. I don't know whether anybody else has any comments. Yes, Councilmember Beulah.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I'd like to propose a substitute motion. Would this be the appropriate time?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Yeah. And I would have proposed a friendly amendment, but I think it might be easier given the complexity of this. It is the exact motion that's been presented with the only change. I would go with alternative two that was on page nine for the CIP projects that would be deferred. And if I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second. Go ahead.
Yeah. First, I just want to say that this whole process right here, to me, the guy who's out here talking about getting committees involved and really working through a process, this to me has been a great example of how all the committees work. And I know alternative two was kind of the upshot of Five PAC's instruction to give us some alternatives after, well, I'll point to column one came out. And I do recall the discussions that were had. And what was also nice when we came back to a study session, Five PAC was not advocating. They were not pushing. They were not saying, you know, this is what must be. They said, you know, here's our alternatives. We've set our piece. We've informed council and we leave it to you guys to decide what to do. And I think this was a perfect example of how the process allows us to make an informed decision. Having said that, primarily from memory and recollection of our last study session that preceded this, I was persuaded that the two handlers that were on the original were previously earmarked as being a critical piece of infrastructure, that we're going to find ourselves in the chiller situation or the other situation where it's going to suddenly break down, given the life expectancy that it's run so far. And I was persuaded by the recommendations that instead of deferring those projects, we replace them with the two, the sewer line improvement, if my recollection serves me right, that was more of a nice, not necessary, and I know that might be more cavalier than you guys might want to call it, but there weren't presently any leaks, major problems going. It was something that could, in my opinion, could be more readily deferred than either of the handlers. Likewise, as to the senior center improvements, I know deferring that, there's an emotional twinge to the heart, you're doing anything to touch the senior center. But I was also persuaded that it was primarily carpets, flooring, aesthetics that we're talking about. And we're going to expend that money, install all that, right at the time we're getting ready to do the major jamboree development. And to me, timing-wise, it just seems to make sense that as, we could defer that as we roll up and complete the jamboree. And I know there was commentary that, well, we're talking about internally and there's not going to be construction residue, if you will, impacting the newly installed and upgraded. I don't know if that's accurate or not. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I'm more persuaded that better safe than sorry. And if it is more of a cosmetic, and I understand the importance of psychologically and having a nice, safe, clean, enticing environment, but with that jamboree construction going, I do think it's more appropriate to defer the senior center project. So that's why I argue 100% and in the golf course stuff, I'm not going to belabor that. I agree 100% with what was said both by the public and Mayor Stevens. It's an income-generating asset. But the only change to Mayor Stevens' motion is I'd recommend, or I move, that column two from page nine be the CIP deferral list.
Okay. I'm going to make it easy. I'm willing to support the substitute motion. Are you? Okay. So with that.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, of course.
So we're saying golf course and tennis center are off the table, right? Because any, I mean, we don't make widgets here in the city. We collect taxes, which I'm not going to about raising them. And revenue-generating activities, we need to keep, we're keeping those, correct? And so are we voting yea on CAN deferral '24, '25? What about '26? Is that, are we not voting on that at this point?
No, we're not.
Just the current.
It's just, yeah, it was just direction to come back with just some ideas. Okay, good. And I think based on what we've said, we need a supermajority. The Director Seth Araman asked me to do it separately, but I think we're going to be unanimous. So with that, why don't we call for the question? We don't need to do a voice vote because we could just call for the question? We don't need to do a voice vote, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay, good. Let's vote. Is on the substitute motion.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, good. All right. So Councilmember Chavez asked me to give him the floor at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, for concluding council comments. I missed one request I had for staff in my jubilation to praise Jean Forbath's life. I also want to bring back a permit streamlining ordinance akin to the California one that looks at three-day turnaround for permits we receive.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we'll adjourn the meeting then in loving memory and in honor of Jean Forbath. May she rest in peace.